I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll open up this December 2nd morning Commissioner's meeting. We have shot health, the other three commissioners, attorney present. So first only agenda, we have a library board appointment for Lisa Thomas. Anybody have any questions on that?
Nope.
I'll make a motion, appoint Lisa Thomas to library board.
I'll second it.
Okay, all favor. Motion carries through. Sign that out. Okay. We have a local here at the city. And Holly, you look that over.
Yes, it's fine.
Okay. This is for the...
911.
What's that name?
That's for 911. It's no way that's not...
Basically, what happened, I don't know if anybody was at the... I don't think you two was at the council meeting. The council last, their last meeting authorized $50,000 to go in with the city to, for the, I don't know if it's called purchase, but obtain the wellness center. So that's the inter-local agreement stating the terms and conditions.
Somebody have any questions? Okay. Pairing in, I'll guarantee a motion to approve the inter-local agreement with the city.
So moved.
Second. All favor. Motion carries through. Okay. Brooke.
No.
You're down there all...
I sit on the side so I get to hurt. I'm sorry, I got some notes here. Okay, I don't, I just have a few. So I am seeing quite a bit of increased call volume from taking on Rochester City, which is actually more than I anticipated. Nothing too overwhelming, but it's nice to have that third person in there if it's available. I'd like to have at least two full months of, you know, the data to be able to give accurate, because we kind of had that partial versus a whole. So just to give a rough idea, mid-last month, I was about 486 calls shy of the whole entire month of the month prior. So I'm sure we surpassed that. Like I said, I'd like to have a couple full months to be able to pull some...
Are you at full staff now?
Well, we're still training our two.
Oh, okay.
Six months at minimum before I would even consider cut loose. We haven't really started then taking actual 911 calls yet. One of them is starting to take a little bit of administrative. So yeah, unfortunately, we can't just fill a seat quickly. It takes quite a bit of time, so... Which is not fun, but that's just the way the cards fall here. I met with priority dispatch because previously the police and fire had been purchased. I basically told them I wanted to start fresh. I went to them, I said, "I already purchased this, but I want you to sell it to me. I want to know what I'm going to be implementing." So I had that meeting. With recent events, I think it's going to be a good thing to put forth. There's going to be some major growing pains, including for myself with 14 years, it's going to be hard, but police especially. But that's just going to provide some structure to make sure things are done. You know, I'm going to take the same type of call as the next dispatcher. It's going to be the exact same. So it's going to hurt, but we bought it, so we don't have choice but to put it in. The new hires, I'm just going to update them. They're still in training. And I'm still working with Ferry Ritter on updating all the policies. We're a little ways through. They're sending them to me, I'm reviewing them, tweaking them, and hopefully have those in place within the next couple months.
I know last week me and you had an EMS board meeting at the hospital.
Yeah.
I thought it went real well. Trying to think what all of a sudden, but basically you did, she did inform them that she has potentially planned on taking it back, you know? So the dialogue's going to start there. I mean, you know, whenever you feel you're ready and then we get up to full force and you, you know, get your feet underneath you, that's a dialogue we're willing to have, or at least...
Yeah, so I think the feet are on the ground and ready to roll them. I think the longer we wait, so whenever I have your guys' blessing and me figure out which way to go, but honestly, in the next couple months, I'd like to have that back. Especially before we start police and fire. I don't, I don't want to start all three at the same time, even though I've had the dispatchers continuously working the protocols currently, even though it's through a second, you know, we're listening to Parkview, but I'm making them go through the protocols also. But yeah, I'd like to see... It's just, it's not what I feel is best for our community. I think it needs to be right here. The girls are fantastic. There's no reason they can't handle that. I have no doubt that they won't do fantastic. But yeah, I'd like to do that before we implement the police and fire. And the maintenance on that's going to be starting soon for police and fire, and we don't even have them started, so, you know, if we're going to be paying for it, we need to get them...
If you feel comfortable after the first year, we'll start talking about it.
Yep. I appreciate that. It's fine.
I mean, you know, let us see where it falls, but...
Well, we're ready, so...
Let's see, what else come out of that meeting? Rebecca reported a third ambulance is, is over at Akron, fully staffed. She's thankful, everybody's glad it's over there. Can you think anything else I'm missing, basically? Call run times is right where they want them to be, pretty much.
Yeah, it's just the most difficult thing, well, I don't want to say the most difficult thing, but one of the difficult things that we're encountering is we don't have access to see where the ambulances are, what's the status. So we constantly have, you know, other units, whether it be fire or police, wanting to know the time of arrival of them, because we don't have any idea. So the communication is very slim on what we have access to, to act right now. And that makes it difficult for our responders on the ground also, so...
And then when you go back doing it, you will have access to see where they're at.
We'll dispatch them.
Yes.
So we'll know when they're in route, arrived, en route to the hospital. So yeah, we'll have, I wouldn't say complete control, but yeah, it'll be like old times. We'll, we're kind of the communication hub like we should be. So... But yep, I think that was the, the main things of that meeting, but we're ready. I prepared the girls, letting them know that, you know, sometimes you got to be the boss, which is hard, but, you know, that's just a decision that I think's for the best interest of our community, is to have that back, so...
Okay. Sounds good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. Travis, sure.
I've only got a couple things. I got quotes, I got the quote back for the 2025 Tadros, Pursuit Tadros from Kelly over in Fort Wayne. They came in at 53.6, so it's just roughly $2,500 more spent last year. They do come with parcel light package this year, so really it's a push as far as what we got last year. So with your blessing, I'd like to get approval to go ahead and order two of those. It's in the COO cab for next year.
Then you're going to put two up, right?
Yeah. Other than that, Bethany Johnson graduates the academy at December 13th. Also, just a couple weeks on Friday, she'll be back, and that'll put us fully staffed on the road, so... Other than that, I don't have anything else to report or update. Once you guys have any questions?
Hey. Bethany Thompson?
Johnson.
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 All right. Thanks, Ash.
All right. Carrie, maintenance?
I just got a couple things. The LED lights that we've been working on, you guys have been working on, that's still ongoing. They're going to try to finish up before the end of this year to get it done. I've got a couple offices upstairs here and two downstairs to get it finished up. The LED, LED lights you guys were talking about, the security lights outside, I guess they were ordered and they were down in the basement. They've been down there for about two years. I found them. There's parts that they needed to install, though, that was never ordered, so I got those parts in already, and hopefully those guys will install those security lights this week and get them back up and going. I did find the timer system for them and some breakers. I traced it down, and so we should be up and going this week with those. Talking about heat, because you guys love it when it's cold. I do, too, because I work on this system every single day. At this, at this building, any other building, that's just, that's my number one things that I do every day. I'm constantly checking the system. The new boiler is up and running. It's, it's doing a good job. I came in this morning, the courthouse was warm in every area that it's supposed to be, except my office was 59, so I had a problem downstairs, so...
That'd be cool.
Yeah, and I was like, you know, whatever, I guess I'd rather it be my office than anywhere else, because then I don't get a phone call, I just call myself, so... Here, there is 17 VAVs in this unit, in this building, meaning that they control each room. Those are getting wore out, they're honeywell. They're very expensive to change, they're anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000. I've changed two of them already. I've got two more on order, and this one is actually, you guys said it's cold in here, and there's a reason it's cold in here. This one is just, it's pushing to the limit and it can't go anymore. So I might have to order a third one. And that's what I'm working on, on these VAV controllers, trying to get this set, so... Once that happens, the thermostats will go to, thermostats like in your house, where you can just touch them and turn them up and down on these new systems. I didn't know if I liked that being where anybody and everybody could touch them, but if I would change all of them out, the expense would be, and then it'll eventually go to a, a controller like the computer system like it is now, but you have to change every single one of them out. And I don't want to start changing every one of them out until I have to. That's a big, big expense. So I'm just going to do it at its time as it goes. Other than that, I don't think I get anything else. One thing is, is I'm watching the bills for the electrical bills and the gas bills at the buildings. Now that I got the new boiler, I want to see what it does. As far as the courthouse, all the LED lights are in there. It's like 95% done. There's some lights up in the attic that I would like to change and get some other LED, small lights in different places changed. The bill dropped from, it dropped $900 a month so far at the courthouse. And so I'm hoping that once this one gets done, they'll be the same, so the savings of the lights will be there. So that's good news. That's all, Anna. Unless you guys got anything for me?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you, Rick.
Chad, maintenance, jail, anything, update?
I don't have anything.
Maintenance building coming along all right?
Eh, they haven't touched it for two weeks.
Did you take a vacation?
I don't know what they're doing. They pulled off to go do a job that they said they were behind on and thought they were going to come back last Monday, and they didn't show up, so...
Everything's going okay out there with it?
Yeah.
Okay. John, highway?
Good morning. I just got a few things for you. First thing is a permit request, 2446. Greg Wyatt, he's requesting to put in a new driveway at the interest, for the, for an entrance to Harvest Moon at 5758 North, US 31. He's wanting to, on the north end of his parking lot, put an entrance in there. He's going, when he bought that field, he's going to make a parking lot there. So he's asking for that. We figured it's going to take a 16-inch caulter repair.
Okay, you're, no seen any issues running, you're good at all?
No, I went out there and we walked and talked and looked it over with him. It all seems pretty good.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, all favor. Motion carries through.
Right before we came up here this morning, a gentleman walked in, Jason Hodgins, and he filled out a permit request, 2447. He's wanting to put a driveway entrance in, also on Old 31, 7061 North, on the east side, right north of 700, north of the substation. I guess he's putting in some buildings there. He's wanting to put a driveway in. I don't foresee any problems with it. I know where he's talking about. We did tell him that we'd have to go up and inspect for culture if needed.
Is that for the landfill?
No, this is storage units, I believe is what he said, John.
Cold storage.
Cold storage.
Just north of the substation?
Yes. About 60 feet north of it, that field.
That's what I thought. Then you're going to double check it?
Yes, and I told him it was going to be contingent on us going up and inspecting that and making sure it didn't need a molder and everything. He's got construction going on this week, I guess, and he wanted to get it in as quick as he could, but...
Okay.
Otherwise I would have made him wait another two weeks, but...
Okay. These guys got to come in. They're going to get us a little ahead of the game, still, last minute.
We fight this all the time.
I know. But I entertain motion to approve, right, 2447, pending John's visual inspection of that, make sure it's what he needs. Second. I'll make a motion.
Second.
All favor. Motion carries.
Bringing up to date, the guys have been patching holes, running the brush cutter, breaking gravel roads, of course preparing for winter. Just normal fall activities, I guess. I did send you a copy of scoping report, RQAW made for Bridge 170. That's...
There's a, we don't have a signature page on that, just say it.
Oh, you don't?
It was on that.
No, I'll get it, I'll get you the file before we leave today. Anyway, I sent you the scoping report for Bridge 170. Bridge 170 is on 1,000 west, north of 550 south. It's a pretty bad bridge. It's one of our top priorities, and I was wanting to go after it for federal aid, if you guys are in grants on that. The call is open right now, closes Friday, so if you guys are good with that. I did send you a financial commitment letter, which I have here for you to sign, if you want to pursue that project. It'd be five years out.
He talked, he has a way to pay for it. He'll pay for this chair, he'll put some money back, go back a few years.
Yeah, we need to get it replaced. This seems like a good avenue, but pursue it, so...
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the...
Financial commitment?
Financial commitment letter here for Bridge 170.
Second.
All favor. Motion carries through.
The only other thing I have, there's going to be a transfer request for $1,540.95 from old bridge inspection, this is highway, just to finish out some bills. Have fun, that works work. Simple transfer. That's all I have.
Anything else from John? I guess you've got your trucks getting the plows put on, we're getting fitted for those two, to the tandem, I said?
So we, we bought one new plow for one of them, and then we're retrofitting another plow over for the other one, so...
Will you be ready to go here before long?
Probably first year.
First year.
They're, they're getting built now, we're up there now, so...
So I said, just one, are they out there?
Yeah, they're out there, they're...
Sounds good.
We went up, Doug and I went up two weeks ago and went through what we wanted done on each truck, and went off through it with them, and they were getting ready to start again, so they figure, usually it's about 30, 45 days after they start.
Sounds good. Josh.
Thank you.
Josh, IT?
Good morning, Josh.
Good morning. Just a quick update for you guys, I don't have much this, this week either. So I've had an opportunity to talk to some of you, the website. Unfortunately, CTI has gotten ahold of us. There was a couple of key components for the live streaming element of the website, hardware needed to make sure that it functions properly. They have been on back order. We finally have those available, but the problem is the installers can't be here now until January 6th. So they're scheduled for January 6th through the 15th, which not happy about, that I've had an opportunity to talk with Kathy, which is the incoming monitor. She and I talked a little bit, and that gives her a little bit more time to sit there and brush up on some things, being the fact that we've had end of the year coming up, and then she's getting ready to start her new position very first of the year. That gives her a little bit of a buffer to sit there and get where she needs to be. And that gives us a little bit of a buffer, too. So we are planning on pushing the website launch back to coordinate with the hardware install. Devin and I will have everything placed for CTI before they get here, and there shouldn't be much disruption in this room when they're doing the work. The only disruption that probably is going to occur is going to be more back in the commissioner's room. We've given up Ryan's space. He was very grateful and gracious to sit there and give up his office space for all the equipment. Kidding. No. Everything's going to go in that closet, so ventilation should be good and everything else. So that's what I have on the website. Then I noticed Dave today. Devin, Devin will be in. If you want to get us after you guys are done with the meeting, we'll sit there and get your photos taken for the website.
This is all they're giving, right?
Holly, I, I, this will never, ever be let go of. I rely on you constantly. And then as far as the highway department's concerned, Devin and I are out there a couple weeks ago, got the wiring internally done. RTC's been out from the substation, got the boring taken care of, run over to the office there in Kiwanis. The only thing we have left to do out there is get the cameras installed. We're hopefully going to get that done this week or next week. Hopefully we'll get a little bit of a warmer day to do it, get that taken care of. But other than that, they should be good to go, and I think their printer should arrive sometime this week, but other than that, I think as far as Kiwanis, that's pretty much it, is enough. Other than that, moving some servers over. Brittany and I have been working together, which she mentioned, we had a brief meeting of Pro Q A. The other thing is Evans.
Yeah.
So we've been back and forth with Evans. They have a LumaLink module that we've had some issues with. Brittany and I finally got in touch with them and said, "Look, you know, this is, this is not an issue that really is on our hands so much as it is your hands. We need to get the three groups, Evans, and digital, and ERS, to sit there and get on site and sit there and work together and get it figured out." So other than that, that's really all I can think of at this point in time. So if you guys have any questions for me?
You say you're launching after, the 15th or after?
Yeah, we're going to launch after, after we're done, so sometime after the 15th, and I'm going to get ahold of the company this week and find out and see what we can do as far as, you know, a solid time to get it taken care of. And I'll talk with Kathy a little bit more this week, too, before I do that.
Okay, good. Thanks, Josh.
Yeah, you're welcome, guys. Thank you.
Kathy, treasury?
Just other than we got settlement this week, so false settlement to get everything wound down for the end of the year, and then of course looking on transition.
There you go. You should look with that.
Yes.
Dawn, EMS?
Morning, guys.
Good morning.
I do have a few minutes. EMAs assisted with shop with the cop or truck with cop, and they had about 60 in the rainy, misty day was there. They had about 60 participants in that, so the numbers were really good for the shop with the cop.
Soup, I heard you.
Huh?
The soup was good.
Yeah, yeah. Margot from over at the coroner's office brought the meal in form for the day, so that worked out well. Speaking of Margot, she'll be helping with EMAs dinner also, so great help there. The dinner's this Thursday. Our meeting will be first. The EMA Christmas appreciation dinner will be after that, and the EMAs will also at that time on the volunteer program, putting in their presidents and secretaries and all that good stuff for the EMA volunteers. Next Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, the 11th, whatever day the 11th falls on, is the training exercise. So we stay in good standings with the state and so on and so forth. It'll be a table talk, it'll be radio training. We're calling in outside area of the county to have them come in also, make sure everybody's set up and progressing on their radios before we go into next spring's full-scale exercise. So that is at Grass Creek. Attendance would be appreciated by everybody who, I know John Flann's going to show, come in. I believe Brittany's going to be in. Everybody who's got the radios for the counties needs to come in for this at possible. I believe 6 o'clock.
Is it 6? Okay.
7.
I had 7 on my...
7 to 10. It's really weird, guys, because what we're trying to do is stay away from weekends. You know, a lot of these agencies are volunteer agencies, we try not to eat up their weekends.
I have 6, too.
You have 6? Because I knew we was...
Let us know the time, email the time.
I will, I will email the times out.
Because I knew Andy was talking about one being at 6 or 7 with, there's two or three dairy farmers or...
Yeah, because then we try to work around the farmers, the volunteers, and things like that, so whether they're in the fields or whether they're the dairy farmers in our area, you know, just trying to really make something work out. Our building, our EMA building, and a couple things here, I'm not going to let Carrie out daily on thermostats, no, I'm just kidding. We're putting in a lot of new equipment out at the EMA building. Being the first year in and working with budgets and so on and so forth, which you guys will see, I had to transfer some monies, encumber some monies, but anyways, it would be on my radar next year, guys, so you won't have that problem as far as what's going on. But we're putting in, Devin and Josh are helping me get in a new thermostat, Wi-Fi system thermostat out there, so we can regulate that building, as Carrie's doing with these buildings, and help our utilities and things be a little bit more efficient out there. We'll also be putting in new key fob systems, like at the sheriff's department, where you'll scan in and out, so we'll know who's coming in and out of the buildings, not only with our new video systems that they put in out there, but we'll also have a key fobs to get in and out the doors when those come in. The whiteboard, what our goal is to set the EMA building back up to utilize it, whether it's for small meetings or medium meetings, and we'd have for large meetings out at the sheriff's department. So we'd have both directions. Also, if we were to carry in any kind of emergency in this area that would require setting up command systems. If it's extremely large, we'd have sheriff's department. If it's a medium size, we wouldn't be taking up all that space. We would have our whiteboards, we would have our, we're getting a new TV system with a computer system in it, so we can utilize all that out there in emergency situations. Because you bring in, by the time you're done, you'd have so many different departments coming in for your emergencies, that they all need working stations, and we're setting EMA up to take care of that now. All the way down to making sure, there was a couple things when John came out for AD compliance on the bathrooms, so I've got the stuff in, and we'll be getting that put in the bathrooms to make sure that it's totally ADA compliance when it comes to that. EMA, that's it. And any questions there for EMA? And then I'm going to touch real quick on Hope Foundation.
We're good.
Yeah, and I do have, like I said, some different things that I put in for, for transfers. The Hope with Amy Rowe. We're pretty much complete with the structure and the outlines there for Hope and getting, when the person comes into the facility, just to give you an idea of how that will work, we're meeting with three of the churches this week and the ministers. There'll be three different churches, how that's set up, they'll rotate. One will take one month, then they'll switch into the next month and the next month. So there'll be a calendar for each church. They'll go in, they'll take care of filling the calendar. Some of the guidelines for Hope will be, just these are examples, of temperature has to be 32 or below for them to be able to access the church for an overnight stay. There will be timeframes, and they will come in certain times, they'll have to be out by certain times. There's a lot more to this than meets the eye. Where do you put them? What do you put them on? So, there'll be a calendar for each church. They'll go in, they'll take care of filling the calendar. Some of the guidelines for Hope will be, just these are examples, of temperature has to be 32 or below for them to be able to access the church for an overnight stay. There will be timeframes. They will come in certain times, they'll have to be out by certain times. There's a lot more to this than meets the eye. Where do you put them? What do you put them on? How do you watch out for different cleanliness? I guess is the best way to put that. So, there's a lot of different directions. So, I've met with the health department with Denise, and Denise is working with us also. And the health department's gonna be helping supply some of the different supplies we're gonna need through monies that she has, slash, using it on an educational basis too, within the county. So, I think just us not having to come to you guys, or, you know, come to the council for monies, utilizing what we have here in the county. That's what I've tried to do out there at EMA, and what Hope is also trying to do with Amy, so. Any questions there? Yeah. It's turned into a really good thing. We've really put our boots to the ground in working on getting that accomplished. When will it open? Next year, we'll be looking at, I believe it's November 1st, am I correct?
That's the target.
Yeah. It'll be like November 1st to the end of March. This year, obviously, we can't hit that November 1st deadline, but I would say end of December 1st to January, that we'll have it up and rolling. Possibly, possibly, do not quote me on that one, but we're really pushing to get that done for the community. That'll be our heating station. Then, we'll look into a cooling station down the road for next year. This year's cooling stations that I called around and helped out with, we had stuff in place for cooling, but we're looking to do a little bit better job next year for the county for that. Heating, I think is gonna be a tremendous thing once we get it finished up. So, that's it. Thank you.
Brad, do you have any new from Woodlawn?
No, no new updates from Woodlawn, we're just plugging along with the computer system. That's gonna eat up about 95% of our time for the next six months. We go live June 14th. So, it's all hands on deck every day of the week. We'll flip everything over, and as the IT, you know, I always tell everybody I have no clue what IT really does. But there's boxes and plugins. But, yeah, we're gonna be completely switched over to that one system on June 14th, so we'll give you updates if there's any changes, but it's pretty exciting for the community. Just found out last week, we'll be able to also pull, even though Indiana University's not on Epic, they utilize a repository called IHI, Indiana Health Information Exchange, and since they use that, Epic can connect to that, so we can now pull records from even Indiana University Health. So, for the community, they'll be able to get records pulled from any system in the state of Indiana.
Thank you, Brad.
Yep.
Okay, have you guys had a chance to look the travel request over?
Yeah. Submuted.
Sorry. You guys had a chance to look the minutes over for June 21st and August 15th? Any questions?
I could, by the way, I forget what I.
Try to pull up the memory.
But yes, I did look them over. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All favor. Motion carries through. You guys had a chance to look the financials over? Any questions, concerns?
Didn't see any.
All right. We have payroll for $115,297,356.9. Okay, we've got credit card statement, $9,284.79. Miscellaneous claims for December 2nd, $361,156.64. Utilities, $20,000,905.83. Tourism, $8,053.35. We have the lit distribution, $380,470.58. We have the real surtax for October, $55,562.79.
Have you talked about the issues before about the homeless situation, right? You have somewhat, right?
Appropriation for EMA, $3,312. An encumbrance for EMA, $408.61 office supply, $363.80 other supply, and $382.2 for building and repair. We have EMA, building repair, $13,000, an encumbrance for $13,520. Encumbrance request from County Highway, maintenance and repair, the road signs, $11,124.24. Encumbrance request from County Highway, $2,235.80, money for bridges. Encumbrance from Highway Department, $23,904.17 for calcium chloride. Encumbrance from Highway Department, $4,997.77. Kerry, money for the purchase of the trucks. Encumbrance from the Highway Department, maintenance repair, $4,799, tire balance here. Highway maintenance repair, $11,898.96 for road signs.
And here.
Transfer request. Commissioner's exam records, $670 to continuing education. Transfer for Treasure, $355 for printing to continuing education. Transfer to Treasure, $200 for BM to training. Transfer request for EMA, $50 for cleaning to training. Council for transfer, $65 for health insurance to life insurance.
Gonna have writer's credit by the time we're done.
Transfer for jail maintenance, $1,900 from maintenance equipment to fire systems. Transfer from Superior Court, $50 from continuing education to professional fees. Transfer request from County Highway, $0.50 from old 31 repair to community crossings. Big expenser.
Yeah, I don't know. We gotta point that way. Every penny counts.
Yeah, transfer County Highway, $1,540.95 from all bridge inspection to miscellaneous highway. Transfer from Communications, $293.86 from equipment to computer software. Transfer from the Sheriff, $10,000 for maintenance equipment to computer maintenance software for spilling and maintenance fees. Transfer from the Assessor, $532 from training to mileage. Transfer from Assessor, $350 for Cordeam to mileage. Transfer question from the Assessor for $12,031.70 from computer maintenance hardware to contract. Transfer from the Highway Administration, $3 other supply to office supply. We have a treasure transfer request, $1,600 from printing and postage to First Deputy. Transfer from the Treasure, $8,400 from health insurance and deputy seasonal to First Deputy, part-time and perf. Transfer from Highway Maintenance Repair for $952 for other charges to uniform rental.
Just so you know, on that, on that one you just did, that's to pay out Jennifer for her comp time and vacation.
I didn't see one.
Didn't see neither.
Which one?
That card locker for nine hundred.
I just scanned in, it's in the folder.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Thank you.
When you come across the interloper agreement, will you pull it inside, please?
Yeah.
Okay. Old business. Right there.
I don't guess so.
Dave?
No.
Holly?
No.
Should I tell you, old business? Old business with Paul. New business, Chris.
I'll just make one comment, I see Brad's already laughed, but Paula McKinney's retired from Woodlawn Hospital, uh, next week. Need the announcement, but anyhow, coming up here in the next week or two. She has been on the EMS board, big help on the ambulance, getting ambulance service. I just wanna wish her a happy retirement and thank you for her service.
Okay, she's done a great job. Dave, any new business?
No.
Holly?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, we have the credit card statement, the second one. $957.17.
I mean to make copies.
Oh, okay.
Get a copy of the trash.
All right, new business. Good morning.
Good morning. Pastor Steve Hartman from the Burton Bristol Center Methodist Church. I come with a perspective from FC Hope, I'm on the board, also the chair of the County Salvation Army. By the way, there's openings to Ring at Walmart. Also, on the United Industries Board, and my wife works at the thrift store, and that's where I began having contact with the homeless in Rochester, in the county. I don't know how much Travis has contact with them, but they're here, and the numbers are kind of interesting question, but I'm here because there's an organization called Longest Night. It's a national organization, and December 21st, the winter solstice, is when they always do this, and we'd like permission to walk around the courthouse maybe once, 'cause it'll be cold, and just hold a sign up saying, "The homeless are here." It's really started because of the, homeless have died because of the cold over the years. And I don't know if any in this area have died, but I do know some, I've met them through the thrift store especially, but also I've interviewed a few of them personally. We'd like to just say, "Hi, we want to put something out so people know it's here and we're trying to help." We're trying to get warming cooling stations up temporarily. I know the couple food pantries are willing to help us with food. If the churches are agreeing to do this, and have the churches of the county staff, as the pastoral counseling communication person for FC Hope, there's about 40 churches in the county, and trying to get them all in one room at one time is, mm, ah, mm, ah. So, it's a bit of a challenge to get everybody on board and, first of all, believe and agree there are homeless, so I ask me permission to walk around the courthouse at least once on December 21st to say, "There are homeless among us."
Okay. No problem with that? Yeah, I just appreciate the effort you're doing for that.
I care about them. These last couple nights, I think about them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? New business? Okay, other comment? All right.
I just remind everybody that AV, Pope and AV, Treasure for Kids is Sunday the 15th from noon to 4:00, off the fairgrounds. And also, there will be a Pearl Harbor ceremony at the VFW this coming Saturday at 7:00, somewhere between noon and 1:00, I'm not exactly sure of the time yet. I'd like to check that out.
Steve, what is the maze for the kids, what's it called?
Treasures for Kids.
Treasures for Kids.
They used to be toys for tots, but they got in a conflict with ring towers, couldn't use their logo.
They guard that.
Treasures for Kids, yeah. Okay. 15th and 12th and 4th. Okay, good deal. Thank you. Anybody else?
Shop of the Cop is the 14th also. At 8:00 AM.
Okay, that, where's that at?
That's a Walmart.
Walmart.
So, I just avoid the area.
So, I just avoid the area. For numerous reasons, I guess.
Be busy place.
I don't know, Travis, you remember how many kids we had last year? I mean, it always grows.
They helped 286 kids last year with, through the FOP for that, yeah.
I don't know how many it's expected this year, but it just keeps getting bigger and bigger.
And if you know anybody, they need to go through the school systems to get into, get on the list.
ECS also recommends.
Yeah, they recommend into the FOP for them, so.
Cool. It's all kids, it's cool.
And we also have the foster closet in Fall County that my husband organizes, so whatever kids don't, we don't double dip, so if they get Shop With A Cop, they don't get the foster closet, if that makes sense, but it's split. So, we, the community does a good job making sure those children, like the homeless, aren't forgotten also, so.
I'll say, thank you, guys, for all, anything else? Okay. There you go, intertreatment recess.
So moved, is that?
Okay. Motion carries through.